Good evening, everyone. Welcome council staff residents and our delegation for tonight's meeting. The council meeting for Tuesday, March the eighteenth, two thousand and twenty five, and we're being streamed live. I'll call the meeting to order at six thirty with the land acknowledgement. We are meeting today on the traditional territory of many nations, including the Huron-Windat and the Shenabbi and the Hudonis-Soni peoples. We acknowledge our shared obligation to respect, honor, and sustain these lands and the natural resources contained within. We honor their cultures and celebrate their commitment to this land. We would also like to acknowledge the Mohawk and Algonquin nations whose traditional and unceded territory we are gathered upon today. Hastings County is situated on treaty land that is steeped in rich indigenous history and home to many First Nations, Métis, and Anuut people. Next on the agenda is, I need a motion to approve the agenda for the regular meeting of the Council of the Municipality of Marmarid Lake for Tuesday, March eighteenth, two thousand and twenty five. Can I have a mover and a seconder, please? Eric and Jane, any discussion on the agenda? Being none, all in favor? That's carried. Is there any declaration of pecuniary interests? Being none. Next is the mayor's report. March the fourth, I presided over the Committee of Adjustment Meeting. At six thirty at that day, I presided over the regular meeting of council. March the fifth, I was invited to participate in the ribbon cutting ceremony to celebrate International Women's Day at fluorescent care in Marmara. I was unable to attend, so councillor Lacatos attended to represent the council of Marmara and Lake. Thank you, Jane. The Soul Sisters of Marmara coordinate the event and residents play a role in recognizing the contribution and evolving roles of women in the workforce and in our communities. I always look forward to this event as I think the ladies who live there and work there are a very special component of our past and present social economy of Marmarid Lake. Thank you to the Soul Sisters, the staff residents, and everyone who contributed to the event. March the sixth, I participated in the preparation of the agenda for the first Southeast Health Unit Governance Committee by Zoom. March the seventh, Dr. Peter Oglaza, the Southeast Health Unit Medical Officer of Health and Belville councillor Sean Kelly and I met with Belville Mayor Neil Ellis regarding the Southeast Health Unit levy. March the eighth, I attended the Women in Wellness event at the Community Center. There were many vendors, special presentations, and guest speaker was Janice Kreisler. At three o'clock that day, I attended the special high tea put on by Mary Provo and Sandra Lummis at the Parkin House in support of International Women's Day. There were many volunteers, including councillor Eric, who was the greeter, and there was a delicious assortment of teas, pastries, and cookies. The space was formally decorated with white tablecloths and purple bowls, something we don't see often. The tea and pastries were served on china cups, saucers, and plates. There were drawers and the parking house was open to tour, and thank you to Mary and her team. The proceeds were directed to the Three Oaks Foundation. March the eleventh, I participated in the Doctor Recruitment Committee meeting in Centre Hastings. We continued to meet to plan for recruitment and ensure we can retain our current doctors. At six o'clock that night, I presided over the special council meeting for public input to the draft two thousand and twenty five budget. A number of residents expressed their opinion to the draft budget and a number of comments were received. All input becomes part of the public record. Thank you to everyone who took the time to write letters and or attend the meeting and for your input regarding the budget document. And thanks to Nancy for an excellent budget report. On March the twelfth, I met with Jim Martin, Mayor of Havlock Belmont-Massoom to discuss our boundary road agreement and future budget considerations for Van Sekel Road. March the thirteenth, I attended a meeting in Kingston to discuss the auditor's report for the Legacy Kingston-Fronnak Lennox and Addington Board of Health and to discuss the two thousand and twenty five audit going forward, since it is a new entity and I am the Chair of the new Southeast Health Board. March the fourteenth, I met with Ron Black, Deputy Mayor of Selwyn Township and Chair of the newly amalgamated or newly merged Cora's Lakes Area Board. We met to discuss our progress on the mergers and agreed to meet quarterly. This is a new project and we can learn from each other's experiences, what's working and what's not, and how to move forward. March the sixteenth, I attended the celebration of life for Vic Provo. The Provo family are pioneers to this community and their family members are very active in our community. March the seventeenth, I participated in a meeting to prepare the agenda for the Board of Health Governance Committee for March twenty fifth by Zoom. March eighteenth, this morning, I attended the regular Hastings County Planning and Development and Finance, Property, and Personnel Committee meetings. Both committees passed their budgets and recommended that Hastings County approve them. A special meeting of council was held immediately after the committee meetings to approve decisions made in the closed agenda due to a time sensitive submission required to the ministry. And I'm now presiding over the regular council meeting of Marmarid and Lake. Thank you. Next on the agenda is our delegate. And I'd like to welcome Kelly Pometier, South of the Southeast Health Unit Oral Health Program Manager, and it's regarding mobile dental van requests, look for a location. And so I'm going to ask you to go ahead.
Thank you very much. So as mentioned, my name is Kelly Pometier and I'm the Oral Health Program Manager at Southeast Health Unit, which is formerly the Hastings Prince Edward Public Health. I appreciate all your time tonight to present the Mobile Dental Van Initiative. This helps to bridge gaps within your community to help improve oral health equity through delivery of dental services for eligible clients. So the Oral Health Program at the Southeast Health Unit has purchased two mobile dental vans, which house clinical space for delivery of dental services across our region. One of the vans is currently delegated to be meeting the dental needs within the Hastings and Prince Edward Counties, while the other one will be used in the Kingston, Fronnak, Lennox, and Addington region communities. In preparation for the rollout of the mobile dental services within the Hastings-Prince Edward communities, we have conducted a health equity impact assessment. So to explain a health equity impact assessment is a tool that assists in identifying and addressing potential unintended health impacts. It helps to develop policies, programs, and initiatives on vulnerable and marginalized populations aiming to improve health equity and reduce disparities. So in our case, it helped with the initiative of the mobile dental van. So from this health equity assessment, the goals that I have established and it has identified through the assessment would be to provide access to services within thirty minutes, provide services to individuals who are not already accessing services at our Belville Health Unit location. So we do have a dental clinic within our Belville Public Health. So the other goal would be improve awareness of the ministry programs and access to the care. And then last would be focusing on the Ontario Seniors Dental Care Program Client Group, specifically isolated seniors, indigenous community members, and ethno-racial community members. So my request to council is a parking location in Marmara to help support this initiative. So how the Marmara area has been identified was through comparing data that we have collected through our Belville Clinic, which would be the number of clients with the specific postal code. And that would be, I have researched the Marmara postal code versus the ministry data, which provides also again by how many clients on the Ontario Seniors Dental Care Program at a specific address. So we've used this as a key to identify key locations within Hastings-Prince Edward Counties to locate this dental van, which Marmara was one of those areas. Marmara has ninety-seven community members enrolled in the Ontario Seniors Dental Care Program, and they have active cards currently. And we currently are seeing twenty-nine of these clients in our Belville Clinic. So that means that there's thirty percent of the eligible Ontario seniors dental clients being provided services, which means seventy percent of clients are not receiving any services at this time. So to furthermore understand the initiative, who would be eligible for these dental services? So as I mentioned, the Ontario Seniors Dental Care Program clients, as well as our Healthy Smiles Ontario clients. So the Ontario Seniors Dental Care Program is a provincially funded program that provides free routine dental services for low-income seniors who are sixty-five years of age or older and are eligible based on the criteria set by the program, which is set by the ministry. And then the Healthy Smiles Ontario Program, also known as HSO, is also a provincially funded program that provides free preventative, routine, and emergency dental services for children and youth up to the age of seventeen years old from low-income households. And again, it is based on the eligibility set out by the province. So how clients will enroll for services on the mobile dental van? They would call Hastings, sorry, Southeast Health Unit, our dental program to one either enroll into one of those two programs, or if they're already an active card holder, we could book them into the location that is required, which would be Marmara. So we through the health equity assessment, we have also identified that we will have to complete an evaluation of the mobile dental services to ensure that we are obviously hitting the markers and the goals that we're setting out to hit. So as mentioned, as part of the HEIA, the Health Equity Impact Assessment, we've established an evaluation to ensure we're increasing access to care and reaching the vulnerable population. The survey will be conducted during the client's initial appointment on the mobile dental van. The survey will collect information to ensure we're meeting all the goals for clients to accessing these services. In addition to bringing the mobile dental van to this area, we'll be doing promotional work within the health unit. So we're promoting the Ontario Seniors Dental Care Program during the Oral Health Month, which is in April. So we are going to be providing resources to community partners who directly work with isolated seniors, indigenous serving agencies within Hastings-Prince Edward, and culturally appropriate spaces for ethno-racial community members. We also are looking at doing flyers to be posted within the community to promote the mobile dental van being within the community, which would be Marmara, and then social media posts on our page as well. So what we need to, what needs to be established? The dental van will be utilized Tuesdays and Wednesdays once a month in Marmara location if approved by council. I'm requesting to have a set week to ensure a smooth rotation through the Hastings-Prince Edward regions. Example, the first week of every month, from May to November, we'd like to be in Marmara or whatever week would work. That was an example. Service delivery could be canceled, obviously, in the event that the dental van goes down due to maintenance or if there's staffing shortage, which then we would contact the appropriate individual to notify them, as well as we would notify the clients who are booked onto the dental bus. So I'm not sure if the requirements for the parking have gone over. So the dental van is about twenty-seven feet long, eight inches, and it is eight feet wide, and it requires about additional six feet around for client and staff safety on relatively flat terrain. And then just we are requesting access to public washrooms for the staff and client, as well as the ability to park the mobile dental van overnight between the Tuesday and Wednesday, and then it would be leaving the region until the following month. So I defer my question over to the staff about the proper location and if this is something that we could potentially do.
Thank you, Kelly. This is exciting. I think this is a very good service, Marmara. I think, you know, will benefit a great deal. And I just, I'm really pleased that this is happening. And I don't think I've I think we probably need a motion to receive Kelly's proposal and just refer her to meet with staff and she and staff to work out a proper location, if that's suitable.
To your worship to council, I think the manager of Parks, Recreation, and Facilities also has to comment on that.
Okay, go ahead, Jeff.
Thank you. It's, this is a great program and opportunity for our community. It provides valuable service to our residents in need. The recommended location is the arena at twenty-eight Victoria Street. This provides the best option as far as having adequate parking central to the community and accessible washrooms available to the public. The only other suitable municipal parking lot that provides acceptable parking and washrooms available during the dental van's working hours would be the Beach House. We have decided that the arena is the best option, giving the patrons of the dental van access to the arena to escape the elements in the summer months if in need, especially with the seniors at risk who are receiving this service.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions about this? Go ahead, Eric.
I'd just like to request if any of the information that you are putting out there on social media or promoting, that the municipality be copied on that as well, so that they can put it out through their email channels or on municipal social media as well to make the community aware.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Jane?
Is there any chance that there will be any other events at the Lions Hall on the times that will be slaughtered or will we have to juggle things around? I realize it's probably a Monday and a Tuesday or something.
Tuesday, Wednesday is the purpose. And it'll be the downstairs of the arena, Jane.
So, so, okay, okay, good. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
And that the app, just to clarify, on that Tuesday and Wednesday, the hours, this is a daytime program or evening, or what's the goal?
That's correct. So it would be, I don't have the exact set hours, just because we have to establish, we just established that it would be a Tuesday, Wednesday. Next is sort of selecting what week through that month works best for Marmara. And then from there, we can establish the time. So I would say roughly around like nine, nine-thirty and then till around three. And again, it's booked appointments for those clients who are eligible, just so we don't have a whole, a whole bunch of clients showing up thinking they're going to get services or taking time out of their day and then not receiving. I don't want to cause disappointment. So we, at this time, we think that doing the booked would be better, so they will know exactly when to show up, but it would be within your hours.
And how many patients do you anticipate being able to see during a day?
So consulting with other health units who already have initiatives similar to ours and then looking at the geographic region, obviously, we're traveling from Belville to get the dental bus here that eats up some time, depending on what type of client, what type of services required. If it would be seniors for needing dental cleanings, then we could maybe be three, four. It's hard to say. It really is all based on the dental needs. And if they're Ontario's, or sorry, the Healthy Smiles Ontario screenings, they're a little bit faster, so we could see more clients. So it depends on the needs.
Thank you. Any further questions? Then I think we need a motion to receive Kelly's delegation.
Sorry, can we receive and approve the arena parking lot location?
Do you want to make the motion, Eric?
I guess to receive the delegation's report and approve use of the arena parking lot as coordinated with the manager of Parks, Recs, and Facilities for the Oral Health Program.
So can I get a seconder for that, Jane? Any further discussion? Again, thank you. I think this is just an excellent program. And this is one of the new initiatives of the new Southeast Health Unit, which I'm very proud of. And thank you. So all in favor? That's carried. Thank you, Kelly, very much. We don't have anyone for public input. So next, I need a motion to that the foregoing minutes of the regular meeting of the Council of the Municipality of Marmarid Lake for Tuesday, March the fourth, two thousand and twenty five, be approved as presented. And I have a mover and a seconder. Jane, second. Mike, any discussion on those minutes? All in favor? That's carried. And the next one is that the foregoing minutes of the regular meeting of the Council of the Municipality of Marmarid Lake held Tuesday, March the eleventh, two thousand and twenty five, be approved as presented. And I have a mover and a seconder. Eric? Second. Mike, any discussion on those minutes? All in favor? That's carried. Next are the staff reports regarding the two thousand and twenty-five council remuneration and expenses. And the recommendation is that council accept this statement of council remuneration and expenses, two thousand and twenty-four report dated March the eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-five for information. And Nancy has, I believe, an amendment to offer to that recommendation.
Yes, thank you, Mayor O'Neill. There's just been a small amendment to Mayor O'Neill's expenses. Three hundred and thirty-nine dollars and fifty-three cents has been moved from Mayor O'Neill to councillor Lacatos for professional development and conferences. So that's just the small amendment.
Thank you. So the recommendation is what I stated as amended. So can I get a mover and a seconder for that, please? Eric and second, Mike, any questions or comments? Eric?
Just like to thank the municipality for the opportunity. As you can see, there's professional development and conferences. I think those of us that do participate have real value in participating. It's a great opportunity for us to learn more, engage with other communities, and bring back great examples and ideas. So thank you for that opportunity. I'd also like to just clarify on the communication column. That includes our municipal issued cellphone, but also includes our tablet that we use here today that stays here at Town Hall. So it's, it's not necessarily municipal issued device. It's something we use here in chambers, part of that total. Thank you.
Anything else? Anybody else have comments or questions? All in favor? That's carried. Thank you. Next is the draft municipal facility rental fee waiver and reduction request policy. And the recommendation is that council accept this municipal facility rental fee waiver and reduction request policy report dated March the eighteenth, two thousand and twenty five. And further, that council direct staff to bring forward a final draft of the policy for council approval at the next regular council meeting. Can I have a mover and a seconder? Eric? And second, Ron? Any comments, questions? Eric?
Thank you to staff. They did an incredible job on this. It was a lot of work in a very short amount of time, putting this together and translating that motion into not only a policy, but an application and then also the, all the follow-up portion, which is great to have in there. I do have a few questions for clarification through the chair to the clerk. So the first one is, there's one section in here. Section number seven, application procedure. It says that this policy must be submitted to municipal staff at the municipal office. I know it's, there's also the fax and email on the bottom of the application form, just to clarify that those are acceptable methods for submission.
Through the chair to council? Yes, any way that they want to submit that application to staff here at Town Hall is acceptable. It can be mailed, it can be dropped off, faxed, emailed. And there is a specific email address for bookings, and that would be the appropriate place to email. So, yeah, however they'd like to get it to us, we'll take it.
Thank you. Second question related to availability of this is the plan to put this completed document and application on the municipal website on the facility page?
Yes. Yep, that's the plan.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have comments or questions? Mike?
Yeah, I'd just like to thank Kristin and whoever helped her, if she had any help for doing this, because it was a lot of work. I just got one question or a comment. The insurance on the event? I'm assuming that the event insurance that is part of the budget will either be incorporated or left out after the budget. Is that correct, Kristin? And in the meantime, do, does everybody have to supply their own insurance at this point in time until that's resolved? I would assume so, but I just wanted to check.
Through the chair to Deputy Mayor Stevens. That's correct. For now, because that special insurance program hasn't been approved and has been purchased, we're just operating the way we have been where everyone's required to provide their own insurance certificate. Should council decide to participate in that program and provide that, we could add that into the policy at that time. However, that's being, if it is, however it's implemented and what the expectations are, we kind of lay that all out in that section in the policy.
Thank you.
Thanks. Anyone else? Okay. Again, reiterating what everybody said, Kristin, we know you put an awful lot of work into that and it's very detailed and it's, it's going to be a good document. I think it'll help staff in processing these and help council in, you know, dealing with special requests. So thank you. So all in favor? That's carried. Next report from Dylan regarding the two thousand and twenty-four Ontario Structure Inspection Manual Inspection Reports. The recommendation is that council accept the two thousand and twenty-four OSM inspection reports, report dated March the eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-five for information. Can I have a mover and a seconder, please? Ron? And Eric? Any questions or discussion on Dylan's report? Go ahead, Eric.
Through the chair to Dylan. Can you just speak to, we have a lot of structures that are identified as urgent or within three to five years. What are we doing right now to protect the structures that we have in terms of maintenance or upkeep?
So currently, every year, come springtime, we perform annual washing of every structure, doing the decks, sweeping the decks, washing the railings, the abutments, basically the entire superstructure, as well as following the list four of our structured maintenance requirements under our OSMs. That's part of our annual.
Dylan, just pull your mic down closer. Thanks.
Part of our annual structured maintenance capital project of fund and then pitching away, as well as maintenance of any trees, signs, debris, basically yearly monitoring of them.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Ron?
Yeah, I don't have my report in front of me, Dylan, but did any of the structure, did any of the load limits change on any structures?
No load limit changes, no.
Perfect. Okay, thank you.
Any other comments or questions? All in favor? And again, a good report, Dylan. Thank you for all that information. I think when it comes budget time, that's all pretty helpful. So thank you. So the next is CAO status update for March two thousand and twenty five. And the recommendation is that council accept the CAO status update, March two thousand and twenty five, report dated March eighteenth, two thousand and twenty five for information. And I have a mover and a seconder. Eric? Second, Ron? Any comments or questions on John's report? Again, thank you, John. It's nice to have those updates. Good information. Any other comments or questions? Being none, all in favor? That's carried. Committee and board reports, we have the Economic Development Advisory Committee, the minutes of January twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-five. And we have the Building Inspection Services Board minutes from two thousand and twenty-four. I guess it's January twenty-fifth, twenty-four, February fifth, twenty-four, April twenty-fifth, twenty-four, September twenty-sixth, twenty-four, November twenty-sixth, twenty-four, and January first, twenty-three. No, twenty-five, and it's January first, twenty-three. And the recommendation is that the foregoing minutes and reports of the committees and boards listed are hereby received for information. And the recommendation is that the foregoing minutes and reports of the committees and boards listed are hereby received for information. Can I have a mover and a second or please? Ron and second? Eric, any questions or comments on those board reports? Being none, all in favor? That's carried. Correspondence for direction. Central Hastings Support Network minutes of January twenty first, twenty five, and it's that council received the minutes for information. Can I have a mover in the second or for that, please? Jane and second? Mike, any questions or comments on that report for those minutes? All in favor? Carried. Hastings County Council report from January or from February the twenty seventh, twenty five. The recommendation is the council received the report for information and I have a mover and a second or Jane and Ron, any comments or questions on that report? There's some really good information in that report that Hastings County is dealing with. And one item that I would just like you to kind of take note of is that Mark Kirkpatrick is the head of Loyalist College and he put on a delegation to county council that's part of this report. And there are major changes happening at Loyalist College because partly because of the foreign student policy, but also just lack of funding and they're cutting a lot of programs. And they're appealing to the ministry to improve their funding model. And so if you haven't looked at that report, I think it affects our entire community in terms of our workforce. And they really do provide a lot of the programs that suit our local needs at Loyalist College. So and they put forth their their program based on the needs of the community. So just have a quick look. Anyway, all in favor? Mike, did you want to speak to that? Or were you just?
I just know, I just wanted to comment on Loyalist College. The support by the province, Ontario was, I think, I remember correctly. We have the lowest funding province out there for secondary schools and education in Canada. Which seems a shame. We should be pouring more money into education to get these people educated and get everybody into the workforce and community colleges are putting a lot of people right into the workforce as soon as they're finished. I didn't realize that we were that far behind every other province. Just want to make sure everybody knows that.
They work very, very closely with the hospitals for nursing programs and those kinds of programs that's like I said, serve our communities. So it was, I was, you know, he put on a very impassioned delegation to Hastings County, just it was for awareness. So anyway, just wanted to bring that to everybody's attention. So all in favor? That's carried. Building Inspection Services Board, February twenty twenty five, that council received the report for information and I have a mover and a second or Ron? And second? Mike, any questions or comments? Being none, all in favor? That's carried. Jill Stewart, the auxiliary to Campbellford Memorial Hospital regarding annual tag day request. And the recommendation is the council approved the auxiliary to Campbellford Memorial Hospital's request to hold their annual tag day in Marmar on Friday, May the sixteenth, twenty twenty five. And I have a mover and a second or Mike and second Eric, any comments or questions? All in favor? That's carried. Next, Lauren Yuzinski, Town of LaSalle regarding tariffs on Canadian production resolution. That council support the resolution made by the Town of LaSalle regarding tariffs on Canadian production and interprovincial trade barriers. Can I have a mover and a second or Jane and second, Mike? And I think Jane, you wanted to speak to that.
Yes, I just wanted to speak to this. Given, given the current climate that we have between Canada and the US, I did not realize that the challenges within Canada from our transportation and trade from province to province. I realized that this letter is specifically to LaSalle and geographically, it looks like it may not pertain to us. However, it does. To us and it pertains to our province and all of Canada. And that's why I thought it was important that we support this.
Thank you, Jane. Mike?
Just, I've been following this a little bit. The federal government has already eliminated, I think nineteen, I think there's fifty seven, at least fifty seven trade barriers amongst the provinces. They've already removed nineteen of them. And all the premiers of all the provinces are very I guess you want to say gung ho to get this done and get this remedied. Because right now a tractor trailer leaving Ontario may have to offload part of his cargo up at Thunder Bay and load it on a smaller truck, which costs money. There's a whole bunch of other trade barriers. There's been two studies I've seen that the American trade tariffs and also knock far roughly four point five percent out of our GDP for the year. And there's two studies I saw that said, just eliminating our own internal trade barriers would add roughly four percent GDP to our economy. So we can offset most of the hurt just by getting rid of all the trade barriers we have in our own country. So it's a it's a no brainer to do it. So anyways, just my comments.
Thanks, Mike. I just wanted to share a story that come up in in Hastings County Council this morning. Deputy Warden Tony Fitzgerald is is the mayor in Hastings Highlands. And he commented that in one of their contracts that they were letting for road work, whatever construction. They went out really early to get quotes. And their quotes come in, they're one of their neighboring municipalities went out two weeks later. And I believe he said the quotes that come in were twenty five percent higher in a two week period. So we're all going to feel the pain, I'm sure. So just my, just information. So any further comments? All in favor? That's carried. Bylaw number twenty twenty five dash twenty, the MP does designate in bylaw being a bylaw to designate the head of the corporation of the municipality of Marmar Lake for the purposes of the Municipal Freedom of Information and Private Protection of Privacy Act. Can I get a mover and a second or for that, please? Eric and second, Mike, any discussion? All in favor? That's carried. Bylaw twenty twenty five dash twenty one, alternative voting methods by law being a bylaw to authorize the use of alternative voting methods. Regardless, in brackets, internet and telephone voting for the twenty twenty six and subsequent municipal elections in the municipality of Marmar Lake. I have a mover and a second or please? Eric and second Mike, any discussion on that bylaw? Jane?
I would just like to say that I I confirmed with Kristen, she followed up with me that that the voting, any alternative alternative voting methods are within Canada. That was one of my big concerns.
Thank you, Jane. Anything further? All in favor? That's carried. No notice of motions, announcements. Does anybody have any announcements, Eric?
Marmar Public School is having a bingo fundraiser this coming Friday, March twenty first, in the school gym. That's a spring theme. Doors open at six and the bingo starts at six thirty. You don't need to buy tickets in advance, but you can reserve a table if you're coming with a group. Thank you to everyone who spoke or wrote a letter for public input related to the budget. Reminder that you can still reach out to any and all of council over the next several days before budget deliberations begin. Thank you to everyone who attended and participated in the Women in Wellness Expo, as well as the High Tea and auction for the Three Oaks Foundation. There was a great turnout at both events. Thank you to the organizers for all the work that they did in putting those on. The Small Town Shorts Film Festival is back for twenty twenty five. This year's theme is outside. There are categories for all ages. You can stop into the Marmar Public Library for information or help getting started. We had some great local Marmar entries last year. So I encourage everyone, young or old, as a family, as individuals to put something together. They were really well done and outside is the perfect way to highlight our community in theme.
Thanks, Eric. Anyone else? I have a few announcements to make. March nineteenth tomorrow, I've been invited to participate in a ribbon cutting ceremony and presentation of a new business certificate to the Marmar Inn Restaurant. Restaurant is located on Burstall Street in the Marmar Inn B and B. I'm sure anyone who wishes to attend is is welcome. March the twenty first, John and I will be meeting with reelected Rick Bracy, M P P for Hastings, Lennox and Addington. We will have an agenda based on our budget, the asset management plan. We've requested a delegation at the Good Roads Conference and the lack of annual guaranteed funding from the province, I think, will make up the, you know, the majority of our our agenda. And I think the Ontario Structurants manual that or report that Dylan did will will be a good report to refer to to him. So if any of you have any suggestions as to what you'd specifically like to be discussed, please, you know, let John know. I think we probably have an hour or better with him, John Dewey. Yeah. So he's he's coming here and so I think we'll have his attention for a fair period of time. March the twenty fifth is our annual budget meeting. Please note the meeting starts at nine AM. I just wanted to point out that today, if you recall, when we had a delegation from the Pentecostal Church and Free Methodist Church who wanted to put on a pancake breakfast. And they were asking us to waive the the rental fees for the community hall and we agreed to do that. And we mentioned at the time, or they mentioned at the time, that when donations were made, that the municipality would be named as as a supporter or, you know, a contributor. So I have to say today, we got this certificate of appreciation. So I want everybody to realize that that went very well and it's really nice that the municipality gets acknowledged for having contributed, you know, our facilities, I guess you could say, and that they they recognize, you know, that we're part of the support of these programs. So thank you again to them for doing this. I think it says in here they made about twenty five hundred dollars. And anyway, and a nice letter of appreciation came with that. So thank you. That's we'll put that somewhere where other members of the public or volunteer groups can see that. And, you know, maybe it'll become a bit of a practice. So I'd like to see that anyway. Okay, so anyone else have any announcements? Being none. Okay, so will I need a motion? That council will proceed into closed meeting session under the Municipal Act, section two thirty nine, two. And it's litigation or potential litigation, including matters before administrative tribunals affecting municipality or local board. And it's a litigation update. And B, personal matters about an identifiable individual, including municipal or local board employees, and it's regarding organizational review and succession planning. And C, proposed or pending acquisition or disposition of land by the municipality or local board and its potential surplus land. And I have a mover and a second or Eric and second Jane? All in favor? That's carried. So we'll just give Kristen a minute here to get us set up. Or unset us, I guess is the better term.